Good evening, everyone. For being here this evening, we're going to start with a couple of minutes early because as of right now, we have two seated councilors. We have to swear our first, our new three councilors in. I'm going to turn it over to Monique, Sam Paul and Joel. Congratulations, happy to have you here. If you guys will come up here and do the swearing, thank you. Once we have a seated council, I can call the meeting to order and go through the normal procedures that we have to swear our councilor names if we don't have a forum right now.
I solemnly swear that I Samuel Glensrum will support the Constitution and will obey the laws of the United States and the state of Maine. That I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the town itself. I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of town councillor, tax assessor and board overseer of the four.
I solemnly swear that I Paul Schumacher will support the Constitution and will obey the laws of the United States and of the state of Maine. That I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the town itself. I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of town councillor, tax assessor and overseer of the four.
I solemnly swear that I Joe Martin will support the Constitution and will obey the laws of the United States and the state of Maine. That I will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the town itself. And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of town councillor, tax assessor and overseer of the four.
Can I just get a picture of the three of them together?
Yeah, actually. Thank you, Monique. We now have a full seated council, congratulations, everyone. And I'm going to wait three minutes until six thirty to start our regular business. There's no objection, I'm going to go ahead and start with our business today. We're going to be moving in three minutes early. If everyone would please rise with me for the final leave. Thank you. I'm calling for the first town council meeting of the new seated council. Today, November tenth, two thousand twenty-five, they start showing on a weird town council meeting night. This is my first time ever meeting on a Monday evening. Our first order of business this evening, you know, a public hearing for the license renewal of Aura's medical cannabis license. To write a context here a few years ago, the town council passed some ordinance language that required any cannabis businesses in town to go through a licensing process that requires town council approval. Aura's medical cannabis went through this this time last year, I think was their first one, and this was their first renewal. And so this is now a standard process that will be happening before for all cannabis businesses in town. And so we are here tonight to entertain any comments regarding the license renewal for Aura's medical. Is there anyone here that would like to speak regarding the license renewal? Is there anyone on Zoom? Okay, council, does anyone have any questions coming?
Mine would just be clerical on the license, if the business appears to be spelled incorrectly, A R U Z medical. I think it's A U R A Z.
Thank you. Any other questions, Ron? I have a procedural question for the group. Given that the public hearing is supposed to start at six thirty, doesn't make sense for us to be able to adjourn the public hearing before six thirty and start.
Yeah, if you started, well, if you started your meeting three minutes early, a lot of beer, you can close when you're done.
Great. Last, yeah, any other public hearing? Okay, it is six twenty-nine PM, I will go ahead and make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you, give a motion in a second. For the council, just so you're aware, we do have to do a roll call vote because of the Zoom meeting. So I would probably, but please just say aye or yes, whatever you prefer. Sam?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Joel?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. That takes care of our public hearing this evening. We will now proceed to the remaining of our regular council business. We have, for the first time in a long time, five councils are seated, five councilors present. And because this is the first election after, sorry, this is the first meeting after the election, and we have some organizational things to take care of. We've already administered the office to those councilors elect because if we had not, we would not now have a forum now that we're in the meeting business. Moving on to electing a chair and a vice chair for the ensuing year. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to nominate John James as the chair for the ensuing year. Second, second.
Mike? Mike, Mike or Paul?
Just be, yeah, just show that.
I said I will second.
Thank you, we have a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye, Sam?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Joel?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes by here.
I would approve that we elect Mallory Cook as vice chair.
Second. We have a motion in a second, all those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor, aye, Sam?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Joel?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes by here, and we're going to do a little swap.
You really are going to swap?
Yep. Sorry.
Okay. I like that Jeffrey. We can read the chairments.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we need Jeffrey.
Yeah, I like my Jeffrey.
Go behind Austin.
Thanks for talking to me. Yeah, it's just more about, I don't think so. I, I do. Thank you, everyone, congratulations, John, I think over now.
Thank you, bear with me. As we get going on this, it's been a while for me up here. Before we get to the next one, I just want to start off with a couple of things that anybody who's been here for a while, Jack Rock, and she used to be with us, and Jerry McPherson prior to him. We have a different council setup this year, this is the first time in the twelve years I've been here that we've actually had three new councils at once. So we're going to be on a little bit of a learning curve with everybody, including us, on getting to know everybody. And we have a lot in front of the council this year, so. Back to the extent, I just want to go over a couple of things that we just need to go over, just sort of get an understanding. So we're a legislative body of five. Not every vote is going to come out of five oh, four one, three two. They're, they're going to be anywhere. Once the council votes, we collectively support each other, we support that decision, no matter where you end up on it. I've been on both sides of that. Jerry McPherson told me when I got this position, the hardest thing he ever had to do was vote for something for the town, the best for the town, but he didn't personally agree with. Had to do that a few times. One was the location of the police station, I did not like it, but we had overwhelming support from public hearings and the public on where it should be. So in the best interest of town, we went down that road. So that's really, really important for us to work together, that once we make a decision as a council, we stand behind each other. We just go with the decision made, and that's where we stand. It's, sorry. The next thing I really want to talk about is the work we perform. Social media has ruined most of our lives because there's way too much out on social media that isn't true. If anybody follows any of the pictures on any town, half of what's out there isn't really what's happening. Council business is done in these chambers, all council business is done here, on camera, in front of the town. We do not do anything in backyards, restaurants, emails, texts, it all needs to be done here in front of the public so they're transparent and everybody understands where we're at. All the information coming out of the town council should come either from the reporter, which is a respected local journalist that they send and come to every meeting, the town manager or the assistant town manager. To keep everything straight, it should come from the town page. I direct everybody there if they have questions because, again, that's where it needed to be. The recount, everybody was curious, it was up on our town website as soon as it was done. That's where they should get their information from. The last thing I'd like to say is any issue you have, any, any issue you have with legislation we have or problems we have, bring it up here, make a motion, we can put it on the agenda to discuss it. Again, it needs to be done as a group, as a whole, not in a singular fashion. So again, if the five oh vote, so unless the council votes to have you go off on a project, I'll use Mallory for example, she is spearheading the art on the walls for the new town hall and possibly for baking storefronts down front, that was something that she wanted to do, she brought it up to the council, the council at the time, and that'd be a great idea. We all approved, and that's the direction she went. So just make sure that any project you want to do, anything you're working on, has the buy-in of the rest of the council because, again, we are one pot. That's all I have on that. Any questions on any of my ramblings? All right, we'll get back to properly scheduled business. The next thing up is number three, review and accept the town council rules of order and procedures. Does anybody have a chance to read these prior to coming in? Anybody have any issues or questions with that?
Mr. Chair, I would, I would like to suggest, before we get into a motion, am I on my?
Yes.
I would like to suggest a modification to our rules of order procedures, specifically the agenda order. I'd like to suggest that we rearrange things a little bit to make things a little more participatory for many people we have here. My suggestion is that we move the public comment and manage, public comment managers' report, councillor comments up earlier in the agenda. So my suggestion is the order be executive session, if we, if we need to have an executive session. The pledge, roll call, or call to order, followed by public comment, followed by the managers' report, followed by councillor comments. And then from there, everything else pretty much stays as is. So the order of that would be a bill of minutes, treasures warrant, unfinished business, adjournment. And the reason I'm suggesting that is simply because we often have people come to meetings and they're sitting and waiting for a long period of time to make their statements and maybe to have, maybe have other things going on. The school, the school board runs their meetings in a similar way, and I think it's, I've noticed, and I think that would be interesting.
I have never wished that anybody feedback. Let me make a motion.
I can make a motion.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to adopt, to accept the town council rules of order, order and procedure as written with the following agenda order change. Again, I'm going to repeat the order, first executive session, second pledge, third roll call, call to order, fourth public comment, managers' report, councillor comments, three bill of minutes, treasures warrant, unfinished business, new business, adjournment. I hear the background.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second, question on the floor?
Oh yeah, I'd like to add to that, I had a comment related, or a suggestion related to the section six, subsection B related to the public comment. I was thinking that at the end of this document, appendix B, I think it is, we include a part of the state code related to executive sessions. And I was thinking that it makes sense to make our rules here align with the state requirements for executive sessions, which is sort of, in reading this, what the intention of these five bullets are. So in essence, such amendment would read such restrictions on public comment shall be limited to those matters lawfully excluded under main, provide statutes title one, section four oh five, governing executive sessions. And the intent there is to ensure the public's right to address the council is limited only by state law and not by additional local provisions.
I'm sorry, can you refer to specifically where in the document you're talking about adding this and?
Yeah, it would be to strike section D, section six, subsection D in its entirety and replace it with a verbiage that references the state statutes.
And you're referring to the, the state statutes referring to executive session?
Correct.
But that section in that rule procedure is actually referring to public comment on executive session.
Right, and in my reading of this, it was appear as though the, so for everyone, it's every citizen speaking during the public comment period shall not make any comments of that. And in reading this, it sounds like the intention here is to mirror the fact that sections of the state code dictating what is allowed to be discussed in the executive session, we're trying to limit public comment from including comments that would otherwise be within an executive session, if that makes sense.
Uh, no.
Yeah, I'm not.
I'm not, I'm not going there because if we go down, the citizens speaking during public comment period shall not make any comments that disparage individual town councillor, town staff or other citizens, address specific situations that are in litigation, including situations where the town's party go through the litigation, pertain to any personal disputes between themselves and other residents. pertain to any personal disputes between themselves and other residents, or make any comments representing support or opposition of any candidate for political office or political causes, and bring forward any complaints about a municipal elected appointed official, town employee, or another citizen. All formal complaints must be submitted to the town manager in writing via hard copy. None of that has anything to do with executive session, that is just decorum in this room on how we expect everybody to be, how we treat them, and how we expect to treat them. That's, that's exactly how that should be. I'm open, but.
Yeah, I guess my my drawing, I would draw parallels to the disparage individual town councillors to the portion of four oh five related to the potential to damage someone's reputation, which is precluded from public comment, or precluded from a follow-up. So that would be one. Specific situations that are in litigation would relate to legal consultation and let's see where the. I guess I was correlating that to section E, or it was four oh five, six, A, four oh five, six, E. Yeah, I guess I'm going down the line, I guess I can't make the direct comparison to the other three.
That.
Yeah, my intention would be to just ensure that we're not limiting people to the extent that was otherwise, you know, allowed to be here and comment.
We never have, with the twelve years I've sat here, have we ever limited anybody in anything they wanted to discuss as long as it was, how you would wanna talk to your mom? And I guess that's the easiest way I can put it. If you can't say it to your mom, you shouldn't say it, it's in the right there. And that's basically what that says in legal terms. That's my interpretation. Rest of the council?
I'll just say, I, I mean, I think I'm really struggling to follow what the specific suggestion actually is. The section in the end, where we're talking about state legislate, the, the state law, is referring to the parameters in which we can meet under executive session. It's the rules by which we can call an executive session, we most often do it under four oh five, six A, which is to talk about personalities, or four oh five, six E, which is legal, and there's been a few other times we met in between, so I'm, I'm really even struggling to examine, to, to cover in what it is you're suggesting, but I would suggest, like, if this really is something you wanna propose, that maybe you put it into writing, so that we can follow you, since I'm just not.
Okay, yeah, I don't wanna.
No, all good, that's, this is again, this is what we do, this is why there's five of us. So anybody wanna take action on that, or roll with the amendments with the
We saw.
We have the motion that's on the table.
Has that been seconded?
Yes.
I do have one question. So are we following that format tonight?
The new agenda order?
Yeah.
No, I would think, I would think not, but that'll take it back next meeting, but John?
Yeah, no, no. Probably confused about going down this order, I don't wanna start changing. Mr. Chairman, one of the.
Yes, sir.
All rules or regulations, women's and policy put in place by the town council is effective thirty days after the council formally votes on it, unless it's an emergency, void neutral policy, so December's on file. Just, just holding everybody.
Thank you, sir.
John, I just have a quick clarifying question. I know you referred to decorum, and in your past years, has a town council ever been challenged because they've revoked people's First Amendment rights to speak what they want to speak in this room?
We've never revoked anybody's First Amendment rights in this room, we have had some extremely heated discussions in this room on fireworks and a few other things, and people have been warned. We have a three-minute time limit, but we have never restricted anybody, we have given them warnings on the direction they were going, and ninety-five percent of them took that and readdressed. But yes, I, again, nothing about that is First Amendment, nothing about that. It's all about how you speak to people, and it's a lesson unfortunately, we couldn't be done. Yes, sir.
Yeah, one final question. So are these rules, I mean, I, it sounds like it says annual, I mean, are they, can they be changed during the course of the year?
Yeah. Hey, so back to the earlier statement, anytime a councillor has a question, wants to do something, we can make a motion, the rest of the council wants to follow suit, we can get it on the agenda, we can have a workshop, we can go through it, discuss it, change it, modify it, yes, they're our rules, they, they are our rules, but they're guided by us, so we can modify them over the course of the year if we.
Do you have one more comment to add?
Sure, yeah, with, with this.
So the, my only other comment would be that, same, same section, the all formal complaints must be submitted to the town manager in writing by a hard copy, seems a little out of place in a public comment, rules of order document. And that may just be, obviously, it's just my opinion, but I feel like that would be more of a policy or other procedure.
I, my, my opinion on that is that we are basically, let me get back to the right page. All language reads no one can record any, forward any complaints about a municipal elected or appointed official in the meeting, we're saying that that cannot happen in the meeting, but we're giving them the instructions on how they can do that otherwise.
Okay.
So if somebody came up with a complaint about me, so we would explain to them, by our rule, it needs to be submitted and ready.
And that's accompanied by a policy elsewhere as well, that would otherwise be followed per complaint procedure.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second on the table, we will move to vote. Sam?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Joel?
Aye.
Mallory?
Aye.
I vote aye, so I also, we're capacity five zero, moving from there. We will go down to choosing who will be on the Elizabeth Bond Fund LPL financial account.
I will just, can, can I just explain this a little bit? I'm currently on the account, so so everyone's aware, the bond fund is a fund that we have available to us to basically give money to local organizations to help out with, ideally like winter activity. I'm currently on the account, I have been for a little while, I will say, it's kind of like a cumbersome process to go through this, to get on it. But we do need a second person just to be on the account, so that quad point human images that funds for us can surprise. I would suggest probably the chair could make that.
I would, I would suggest that also with one caveat, that there is a possibility either one of us are sitting here next year.
That's fair.
So with that being said, do I have any volunteers from our three new people, uh, who would like sit on us?
It really doesn't require anything other than the initial, whatever work to get put on the account. There will be quad point will come and visit us a couple times a year, and give us updates on the status of the account, and then in like February, March timeframe, we'll, we'll, that's when we will hold our, what is it, Bond Fund meeting?
Yeah, Bond Fund meeting could decide.
I have a question. Um, so I mean, does that involve the distribution of those funds at all, to, for the grant applications or anything like that, or is it just sort of a fine fiduciary oversight sort of?
Pretty much oversight, all funds, all funds for the bond fund, it's based on how much we made over the course of the year. All funds are decided by the town council, will vote on where they go, grant applications come in, and then the council will vote on where, where those funds go.
Any volunteers? I'll make a motion to the meeting.
Mr. Chair, um, um, make a motion to nominate Paul Sheenmacher to to the Elizabeth Bond Fund LPL financial account, replacing Justin.
Second. Alright, we have a, we have a motion and a second on the table, any discussion on Paul? Thank you for volunteering, alright, I don't see anything. John being heard, who votes, Sam?
Aye.
Yeah. Paul?
Aye.
Joel?
Aye.
I vote aye also, you're the only one who has a question.
Aye.
I'm not usually, it's usually who asked me, sorry, Mallory?
Aye.
I vote aye also, five zero. Alright, moving on from the air, we will go to accepting of the town, the approval of the following. For programs up for the public hearing, scheduled from ten twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five. Have any corrections before we make the motion?
My computer just died, there was one that I for sure had. Number one. Um, just around making motion to adopt the public hearing minutes from October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five, I was certain.
Second. We have the motion and a second. Any further information?
Yes, all three of us weren't here, so are we allowed to vote on these?
So you can vote on the minutes without being present, if they're accurate, and that's technically not true, you were here, you just were not seated here, you were in the audience right there. Were you not?
No.
You were for that one? I co-sold it with you, but no, you can, you can, you can vote on then, but I believe, we, we looked at that prior to this. So any other questions, gentlemen? With that being said, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, Sam?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Joel?
Aye.
Mallory?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero, we'll be on to the town council meeting minutes from October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five. Any corrections?
Um, just one, and I think I'm gonna get this correct, under unfinished business, there's number four, and then there's a paragraph following that, where we had Charles Neto, I think, come and speak and ask whether we get access to the plans, the town council's reviewing for town hall rotation, with Charles. So I think we just need to update. Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt the town council meeting minutes from October twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-five, with the modification to change from Charles Mallett to Charles Middell.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, one of information?
Sure.
Also, while this is correction, Mr. Neto's address is improperly recorded, he actually lives on Knight's Pond Road.
Thank you. We miss you.
I'm gonna revise the motion, I'll make another motion to adopt the town council meeting minutes from October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five, to now be Charles Neto from Knight's Pond.
There you go. Motion and second, revise, but we'll do it again, Sam? Yeah, second. Aye.
Aye.
Joel?
Aye.
Mallory?
Aye.
I vote aye also, five zero, the microphones take time. Alright, moving on, we have the treasurer's warrant dated ten twenty-two, twenty-five, I will move to make a motion to sign the treasurer's warrant dated ten. Oops.
That's the wrong date, and.
This, Mr. Chairman, one of the. Okay. Yes, we had a mistake on the that warrant, it's actually, the warrant before the warrant, it's eleven, six, twenty twenty-five, a different amount, so you have to make an amendment change the amount to this, and then vote on that amendment.
You did all the copying, plenty of.
Yep.
That was a correct one, they, they we missed the, this warrant, and just used the old date in time, so that's not the correct amount.
So we, so we need a motion to amend the agenda?
You amend, amend the amount. You still approve the warrant, just gotta amend the amount.
And I gotta amend the date.
The date.
I stopped before I made more.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, just amend the date, somebody, so we just gotta hand it to this. And he had that run by legal today, and he said, because there are already warrants on there, and this one just be voted moving the same.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to, as a treasurer's warrant dated November sixth, two thousand twenty-five, with the amount of one million, thirty-two thousand, forty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents.
Second. Any question on amending the one that is in our, in our notes to the one that's on your table?
Um, no question on amending that, can, we just get clarification why it was so different?
School board, you have a school board amendment, you have a main, SAD thirty-five, payment of eight hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty cents.
It's a pattern from this, but I thought every other warrant was really big, and on every other council meeting, because of that.
In the one, third one.
Oh no, just, that's a stupid one. About eight hundred fifty, about eight hundred fifty thousand dollars. That's okay. You write that track for eight hundred fifty thousand. Wait till the double button. Alright. That takes care of. Sorry, we're like, alright, great. Sure, motion in a second. Motion in a second, any conversation?
No, no, I thought you had already motioned a second.
I did motion in seconds.
Alright, we got a motion on the table, we now move to vote, Sam?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Joel?
Aye.
Mallory?
Aye.
I am on. Alright, reports and presentations, do we have any? Now. Fantastic. Will we have to public comment? Do we have anybody in the audience who would like to speak about something not on the agenda? I'll start in the front, go later.
Well. First, I'd like to congratulate all the members of the town council, new and old, and express my appreciation for the dedication and personal sacrifice of many years of your time and and energy that your commitment represents. The extensive volunteer service we enjoy from our fellow citizens in town is a key asset of South Berwick. I'd also like to thank the town staff and attorneys who participated in last Friday's public count, town manager, assistant manager, town attorney, as well as our town council chair, or former town council chair. Spent the better part of a very long day overseeing this tedious process. And most importantly, I commend both candidates, Brian Hussey and Joel Martin, for their patience, mutual respect, and goodwill throughout. As for the recount itself, our deputy town clerk and her colleagues at the clerk's office really bore the brunt of conducting this process. And they deserve our gratitude for all they did to fulfill those responsibilities with as much efficiency and consistency as possible. I personally played a relatively small role in helping to count votes here on Friday, and it was a learning experience for me. And I look forward to understanding more about the specific, why specific votes were disqualified and new votes added in the recount. I certainly hope that that critical information will be transparently shared with everyone in town. On the town website would be ideal, in my opinion. And this will go a long way towards better understanding the difference between the original and final vote counts in this election. It'll also better prepare voters to participate in future elections, which are the cornerstone of our democracy. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Oh, I should have said at the beginning, Scotland is eighty Academy Street.
Anybody? Please approach the podium and state your name and address, please.
Good evening, John Rudolph, one twenty-six Oldfield Road. I wanna join my friend Scott Landis in congratulating all of you, you're all in new roles this evening. And I wish you luck, and I congratulate you all on assuming those roles. And, Mr. Chairman, I especially appreciated your. And, uh, Mister Chairman, I especially appreciated your comments about, um. The standards for conduct of. Members of the town council and also your comments about social media. And I would express my hope that members of the council. Uh, if they have something to say, that they say it in a public forum such as this, a council meeting, and, um, use that as their primary. Uh, place where they express their views to the rest of the town. Uh, I also want to talk about, um. The need in our town of, of some of our fellow citizens for assistance. And during the candidate's forum, it was stated that, um, I think it was thirty nine thousand dollars in the. General Assistance Fund, and only two thousand or twenty five hundred dollars of that was spent last year. With the cuts in various government programs, most recently the SNAP benefits. We can only imagine what the need is out there, and yet, uh, people are not stepping forward. Uh, to ask, at, at least as I understand, that people are not stepping forward to ask for that assistance. And so I would just encourage the town to do a more proactive outreach to folks. Who you know may be in need and encourage them to seek the assistance that they need, because the last thing we need in town are people who are. Shivering in their homes or sitting around a breakfast table or a dinner table with not enough to eat. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that. Um. I attended the staff meeting today, there were department head meetings, and talked to Erin McGowan afterwards, um. Along the community and those in need and had a really, really good talk with her about how this.
How, how would you say?
Oh, sorry. What's your official title?
Behavioral health.
Behavioral health specialist, yes, behavioral health specialist. Uh, she works for the town. She does fantastic work for us. Um, about how this community has rallied around the federal workers not getting paid. Um, from all the local restaurants, from all the local businesses, um, it's been incredible. Especially in this time of this country where we are with all the just. You can't turn on the news, no matter what you look at, it's terrible. There could, there are suburb and our surrounding communities have been absolutely amazing stepping up to help federal workers and everybody else win SNAP benefits. And it's just, thank you for bringing that up. It's just amazing what has been done by our community. It's, it's very awe inspiring. So, thank you. Uh, anybody else have a public comment?
One. Paul Steinhauer from Hill Drive. I know you've heard it before, but it's, it's good, so I figured I'd mention it again. Great experience at the transfer station the other week. The staff there are outstanding. I came in with a trailer full of stuff and they were very, very helpful. So I can't thank you enough for that. Also, I wanted to thank the previous town council and especially Tim for making single stream. Recycling. Reality. The contract and the interest we have in Echo Main, I think is excellent. The deal is excellent. And it, it gives us buy-in for today and well into the future. The other item I wanted to mention is to thank, uh, Monique, Kim, and all the other town staff. For running an incredibly efficient election last Tuesday. I was honored to be one of the volunteers working there. Uh, for sixteen hours last Tuesday, and it was great. The facility was great, parking was good, temperature was good, room was great, traffic flow was. Was spectacular. So thank you for making the new venue happen. Uh, I know it was a good experience. I only had heard one complaint that I had passed on, and I'm sure that they will be putting together, uh. You know, their heads together with the rest of the town administrative staff, see if there's any process improvements that could be made. But all in all, I think it was a great experience. So thank you for allowing the town to move to the new location. Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering, Paul, also, but I, I had mentioned that today, the staff meeting, I had a great experience. I was in and out of there with my daughter in five minutes or less. Um, parking is great. You don't have to fight anything downtown. I'm looking forward to the annual town meeting, being in comfortable chairs in the auditorium this year. So, it'll be fantastic. Uh, anybody else in the crowd? Anybody online? All right, hearing none, we will close public comment. We move on to unfinished number one, vote on. Anybody want to get me with this? Uh, Dan, aren't they down by you?
I live across the street. I still live however, not that.
Okay, uh, Aurora's?
Oris.
Oris? Oris, okay, we're going with Oris. Medical cannabis business license renewal.
Sharon, make a motion to approve the license renewal for Oris Medical Cannabis.
Uh, second. Any discussion?
I'm about to say, the, um, my computer has now died, um, but I do know that we have information in there. Um, the. We, this is a business in good standing. Um, we've heard no issues in the town staff and town administration has reported, um, kind of approval to move forward with this.
Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Sam?
Hi.
Joel? Paul?
Uh, I'm an I too.
Joel?
Hi.
Mallory?
Hi.
I vote I also, motion then moves five zero. Uh, next up on unfinished, yeah, unfinished business is reschedule public hearing for Bantham Properties LLC. Um. So. It was a error on previous announcement date for the public hearing. The correct date should be Tuesday, November twenty fifth, which is our regularly scheduled council meeting. Um. So I will make a motion to cancel the public hearing for Bantham Properties LLC on Friday, November twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Put the motion in a second. Any comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Sam?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Joel?
Hi.
Mallory?
Hi.
I vote I also, motion passes five zero. We'll move on to number two, vote to reschedule the public hearing for Bantham Properties LLC on Tuesday, November fifth, twenty twenty five. Third floor town hall at six thirty P M.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second.
No, we don't have a second here.
Sorry.
You say?
Yes.
Did you say Tuesday, November twenty fifth?
I said Tuesday, November twenty fifth. Did I, did I say November twenty fifth?
Uh, it's November seventh.
Right there.
Never mind, crazy.
Second. Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Feel free. Uh. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. We move to a vote. Sam?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Joel?
Hi.
Mallory?
Hi.
Vote I also, motion passes five zero. Uh, coming up, new business is to schedule new council training with the lawyer. Uh, every year when we bring in new counselors, we meet with. The lawyer from the town to go over the dues and balance of being a public official and all the stuff to try to keep our lawyer bill down and. Keep everybody out of trouble. So I move to have a meeting with the lawyer on Monday, November twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, at six P M at the town hall, third floor.
Okay.
The motion in a second. I should have asked if everybody can make that work prior to making that motion, but can everybody make that work? Yeah. All right, so we have a motion in a second on the floor. We move to a vote. Sam?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Joel?
Hi.
Uh, Mallory?
Hi.
Vote I also, motion passes five zero. That takes care of the business.
Yes.
All right, I, before we get into the town manager's, uh, report comments, I would like to ask Melissa to come to the front, please. Where?
Like, any?
If you don't wear the shirt, you told me we were gonna. So. So. We, we are having a plaque made for Melissa. She's the marcher. How am you actually just gonna go? Um, as you all know, Melissa was the chair of the, um, council here for three years. She was our vice chair last year. Um, she will be sorely missed, as in tonight, bringing up points in, um. Notes and eating notes that were wrong. Uh, Melissa was a huge, huge addition to the town. She's done so much for us in three years. We're going to miss you and I will get you back, I promise. Um. And my other question, putting you on the spot, are you singing tomorrow at the veterans?
Oh, um, if they need a voice, I'd be happy to lend it. Um, but, um, sometimes the. Marshaled High School Band also does a fantastic job with, um, doing an instrumental version, because Mallory's daughter is not around, we can't have her do it either. So I would be honored if they need somebody to do it, but, um, regardless, I hope to see everybody there and to, just a reminder to thank a veteran every day and not just on Veterans Day.
And what time is that tomorrow?
To be.
Nice work. Two o'clock right up here. Uh, we'd like to see everybody there. Uh, other than that, thank you so much for what you've done. And. Delicious.
Thank you.
But we won't, because you're gonna be right there.
Maybe.
I would also like to take a moment and, um, thank Melissa for her service. Um, I, Melissa was, uh, very. I, I was so grateful to have Melissa on the town council, um, as a fellow woman, but also she was a, um, an excellent counselor who did the work, paid attention, um, and. Best of luck in whatever is next, Melissa, and I will miss you very much.
There's always next year. Look, look, okay, moving on from that, we will get you a plus, we will get you a plaque and have you come back. Um.
Did you make these notes?
No. I had to present you with something. Uh. Mister Town Manager? Your turn, sir.
Mister Chairman. Member of the town council, the twenty twenty fifth, November tenth. On the head up, the HR is following. Highway pavement, roadside mowing and leave cleaning continues. Um, they poured some new curving for Oldfield Drive and then put in the rest of the. While we're curving there, they'll now, uh, once that's in, hopefully on one side, they'll shoe coat the. The circle and then prepare that, let that sit for the winter and then do the final over way in the spring. Um, they did, they used the October concrete for Oldfield Drive to pour a pad for the warming path. Out of House Hill, and I didn't have one. Uh. Thursday, the crew here paving the other railroad tracks. We tried to get the state. They wouldn't. Test. So that's been all done. Tried to get the state, um, we're gonna talk to the state, because I was on the list for the, when we had taken over two thirty six. And part of the maintenance agreement through the state, that was on the list and even paid anyway, they never did, so. We're gonna pay it, try to get it fixed, and, uh, because it's too rough, and see if we can work a deal with the state. And they're also paying two hundred feet of one on Agamiticus Room to fill in the rocks. Police departments had three arrests, more accidents, one hundred and twelve traffic stops. Uh, Officer Goldsmith has graciously volunteered to represent South Borough in the Somersworth Police Department's shop with a cop program. Um, children will be taken to Walmart, the shop, and, or on the Joe's, so I'd shop. Uh, Fire Department has twelve calls in the last two weeks with three hundred and eighty nine yet to date. And additionally, these calls, Fire Department has provided forty two point five hours of ship coverage for York End also the last two weeks. Bring on Toby's total to one hundred and forty two hours of open EMS shifts covered by, covered in October. Code fourth and seven building permits, a low of one plumbing permit, three strict occupancy, twenty seven inspections. The historic district commission meets on the first Monday of the month, zoning board of appeals meets as well, and they're both out looking for new members. On the planning and economic development, planning board meeting on Wednesday to discuss commercial use in rural areas. Um, the active transportation plan public meeting will be held on November nineteenth from six thirty to eight P M. Town Hall, G I S, now shows growth area places that have access to public water and sewer. Water study at Pumpkin Town should be completed by January. It's to give us an understanding of water and sewer abilities in that area. And transfer station, a new building for the, um. The new building for the. Uh, recycle cans, that area that we, we did single story cycle has been completed. Looks great. We just got a last few minute touches to put on that.
At the library, raising kids in the digital world with Sesame Street is gonna be on November fifteenth, and they're gonna do a presentation from ten to eleven that day. It's for children ages three to five, and the event is free. Movies and journaling for teens thirteen and up. Popcorn will be provided. The film is Napoleon Dynamite. Paper journals are available while they last. Call to reserve your space. Reserve, at recreation, the Halloween events went smoothly. There was about eighty seniors at the luncheon, and the parade was heavily attended. Aggie fields have been cleaned up for the season, and they are currently planning and promoting the gingerbread house contest. Houses can be submitted from December first to the fourth between nine and four o'clock. The seniors will have Officer Lejeune, Officer Pocky, and Erin McGann. They are hosting their luncheon learn about scams to train the citizens. Assessing, Berna is working on her valuation abatement request. She has a total of twenty three so far. She is in the process of working on eleven of them, moment. She has also received reeval evaluation manual with P R T and is reviewing that this week, and when finished, will be placed on the table outside her office for everyone to review. Town clerk's office, there has been two hundred and seventy nine motor vehicle transactions completed in the last two weeks, eight vital record transactions, five editorial acts. And on the November fourth election, the turnout total was two thousand, seven hundred and eighty four voters. Of that, seven hundred and ninety eight were absentee votes. In my area, finance, H R, benefits, and safety, um, we had many, uh, meetings for staff election preparation, and I helped in and out throughout the day. The insurance meetings, we've helped with the twenty twenty six policy, and one has been chosen. We will be having. Adam Sturbin here on November nineteenth from Northern Benefits to be doing a presentation to the employees for any questions, um, that they might have with the changes in the new plan. On November fourth, we had foreclosure notices, sorry, foreclosure notices going out. They went out certified mail to nine different properties. This is for the outstanding twenty twenty four taxes. These properties will automatically go to foreclosure on December eleventh if they still remain uncompleted. We have started the budget year for fiscal twenty seventh. Already, we are a little bit early this year. We are gonna be having our first round of department head meetings on the second week in December. And Peter Hall will be here on December ninth to present the fiscal twenty five audit to the town council. And we will also be doing, uh, an interview for the town clerk's position this week.
And for administration. Um, myself and the assistant town manager for communications class. We're not communication professional trainings. Uh, I've had a co book meeting with Paul Trumayka. Had a meeting with Jen Health Insurance, did that, had several town hall renovation meetings. Contract has been finalized and is sitting on my desk waiting to be signed once and for all, finally. Um, several EMS update meetings, um, and as soon as we get a little more. Into the post of the end of the year, I'm gonna have the fire chief, the EMS director give you one more update. We received the, uh, a gun for ambulance today or this weekend. Um, we signed papers on that today that would use ambulance we bought for thirty five thousand. We had originally budgeted a hundred and twenty five thousand to use ambulance, so we got it significantly on the budget. Um, it's, it was a gun for its backup ambulance, uh, only has forty thousand miles on it. It was a good deal with the town. Um, they could have sold it for a lot more, but they offered to us for thirty, thirty two?
Thirty two.
Thirty two. So that was a good deal, so that's in ours, and it's now gonna go get let in. Paying in, have the reviews put in before you get licensed. Um. As Jen said, we're starting working on the budget. Working. Starting that early this year, uh, because of some of the. Unknown cost for development and planning for the next. Future budget. Um. Last one, at least, uh, one last item. So, under the. Uh, gingerbread house contest. Um, under the council rule of order on section three, it said all new councils have to participate this year in gingerbread houses. So we'll be anxious to see what you guys do. No, just kidding.
Oh.
Oh, just kidding.
I bet all the do it.
I'm just kidding. Just sliding your boot. Just sliding your boots, that's all you can do. And that's, that's really all we have for current management updates.
Who picked the podium, by the way?
Thank you for asking that.
I got enough.
I'm in the library.
High five. Great group. All right, we've gone from that. We will go to council member comments, Joel.
So many things. Just taking notes here are things that I definitely want to start presenting to everyone here and kind of moving forward, but looking forward to increasing the transparency coming out of this council as well as this building to everyone in the town. And I look forward to seeing more information come out from this past week. Because I think there's been a lot of questions by everybody after Friday and Wednesday.
I want to just do my annual plug for the Marshaled High School coming up this weekend. Opening weekend for Charlie and the Chocolate Factory. The show will be Friday and Saturday night, 7 P M. And then next weekend, there'll be a matinee edition on Friday and Saturday night. And then fun fact, we were talking about Veterans Day ceremony that is being held here tomorrow at 2 P M. I believe Carter Stevoff, who's senior at the high school, who also is playing Willy Wonka on the show, I think he's doing it. But Melissa, he's for some reason not there, I'm sure he'll step in, thank you. And I just wanted to do a plug to the entire community, this is really important. We very much need applicants for the zoning board of appeals as well as the board of assessment review, particularly the board of assessment review. We do not have a forum for that board. And given the recent property tax situation, we have had a number of abatement requests come in. And so if you are interested in serving your community in that way, the board of assessment review, as well as the zoning board of appeals or ad hoc committees that only meet as needed, so the time committee is relatively long. That's all I have.
Excellent, thank you. Sam?
I'm going to get a little dense, that's okay.
You want to make a motion to have a workshop on that? Because we can't take action on any of that.
Of course, yes, understood. And that's my intention wasn't to take any action, it was merely for comment. I'm happy to just read my comments aloud and then obviously I don't expect any action today. That wasn't, truly wasn't my intent, but. So a couple of weeks ago, the town council voted to repeal chapter 31 of the ordinance, which was essentially the employee handbook ordinance. And it was decided to replace it with a town of South Borough employee handbook, which I guess had been in process of being generated over a couple of years. And instead of putting it back in the ordinance, it was kept as an administrative policy, I believe with the intention to make it easier to amend and update. And I think that's a great idea. I, I had reached out, there was a workshop posted online related to it and that was what made me aware of this agenda item. Anyway, I started looking into it and there was just a few things that sort of piqued my interest in terms of the content. And with the intention of, you know, wanting to make sure that South Borough is a town that people want to work in and attracts talent and is a, you know, healthy working environment, I thought there was at least a few things that could be addressed. And like John said, I don't, I don't expect to take any action on anything today, but I just feel like it was important to address these to everyone, maybe to get the wheels turning on how we can, as a living document, now that it's not an ordinance, and ordinances are of course, but as a policy, keep, keep making it better. So one of the, I'm just going to read this, starting midway down, I wrote something up. While the procedure to adopt and amend ordinance is clearly stated in the town charter, now as an administrative policy, the new handbook lacks a clear procedure for amendment and does not clearly identify which body holds ultimate authority to modify and adopt changes. In fact, section 1.5 appears to contradict itself and it's unclear who the governing body responsible for adopting, amending or repealing personnel policies is. It reads, "The town reserves the right to interpret, change, suspend, cancel or dispute with or without notice. All or any part of our policies, procedures and benefits at any time." We will, this is where I think it contradicts itself, so we will notify all employees of these changes. For transparency and accountability, this should be corrected, I believe. The policy should state explicitly that the town council, not the town, is the governing body responsible for adopting, amending or repealing personnel policies, while the town manager is responsible for day-to-day administration and implementation. In addition, I have concerns related to the grievance procedure in the handbook as it does not provide a pathway for employee file complaints or grievances involving the town manager or designate. This omission effectively eliminates due process in cases where the concern involves a top administration, its administrative position. The policy should be amended to clearly establish an independent path to review, either directly to the town council or through an appointed third-party reviewer such as an H R consultant that can be contacted by employees without prior approval to do so. This is so that employees can report serious concerns without fear of retaliation. Related to protection of employee privacy, and this, in the manual, it states that if an employee doesn't show up to work, then the employer has the right to perform a wellness check on them. Related to the protection of employee privacy, I believe it's inappropriate for an employer to have the right to perform a wellness check on an employee as a condition of employment. Frankly, this, reading that statement made me very uncomfortable. I also have concerns with reporting procedures for discrimination and harassment. The current policy asks that employees approach their harasser. No person, no person could ever be asked to approach their harasser. Finally, I believe the policy would benefit from reinstating language similar to that found in the former chapter 31 dash six, which encouraged employees to help shape the policies that affect them. That section stated, "The council recognizes that as with any undertaking, it may be necessary to make adjustments in these rules from time to time, make them work smoothly. All employees are therefore encouraged to make note of any problems or difficulties which may require changes and bring them to the attention of a superior. The town manager shall make recommendations to the council for amendments as needed. Reintroducing this concept would reinforce culture of collaboration and continuous improvement. Encouraging employees to provide feedback not only improves the clarity and fairness of policies, but also fosters a healthier, more trusting work environment." And I just want to say that I plan to prepare some motions to amend the employee manual to maybe help address some of these things that I found to be not so welcoming as a work environment. Thank you, and also thank you everyone.
So I just want to address a couple of things in there. Just segue into what I said at the beginning of the meeting. You can't prepare a motion because it's all of us. You can bring your ideas if we have a meeting, but we need to have a workshop if that's what you want to do, if you want to look at these changes. The second side, just so the public understands, this was written by H R. This entire thing was written by H R, vetted by H R and vetted by our legal team. So it is 100% above board. Some of the things that you read that you're uncomfortable with, I can tell you four miles down the street from the federal government, we have the same thing. The first attempt is, should be talk to the person that's bothering you. That's right in the ones down street, it should be, it is the same policy. Whether we like it or not, it's there. If you want to change it, again, we can go before the council, but this has to be a five-on-one discussion and a five-on-one collaboration. It can't be just you just, you, and I'm just going on what your words are. You coming up with motions to change, you have to bring your ideas to us and then we will decide as a body if, if it's decided that we want to go to a workshop. So again, we voted, the town council voted, ratified that and put it into really into circulation in our last meeting, correct? Or the meeting before? So if you want to make a motion to have a workshop to work on this, put it on the table. If it gets voted to go to workshop, great. If it doesn't, here's one of those times where we move on. I'm good with either way, however you want to do it.
Yeah, as, as a living document and from listening to the recording from that meeting, it sounded, you know, it sounded like, you know, the intention of taking it out of the ordinance was to ensure that it's continually able to be updated.
Correct.
And the document itself states that, you know, as I read, things change and therefore this will be changing.
So, yeah. Again, I'll agree with that.
To put a stipulation, what sounds like a stipulation, that because you did it two weeks ago, it's, you know.
No, I just wanted to let the public know if they weren't, if they weren't aware, we just voted on this two weeks ago. We had all read it. The sitting council at that time had no issue with the verbiage. Obviously, H R does it and our legal team does it. So now we have a new council. It can change at any time. But if that's the direction that you think we should go, then a motion needs to be made to have a workshop where we can get H R back down here. Because if you have questions, I would like H R to be here and explain to you why it's in there. Because I'm not an H R person. I don't know if you're an H R person in your inner side life. I rely on people that we pay to do this for. So maybe they have a reason to understand, I don't. But if that's the case, we'll get H R down here, we'll have legal here. It's entirely up to which direction you want to go.
Is there any feedback, written feedback that they had given during their review? With some advisement that happened between H R and the attorney, the town, related to the draft that has been circulated?
Yeah, we have all kinds of notes that we talked itself a lot. So the issue about the town, that, that piece, we talked extensively about that and thought that if we, if we would only create a longer piece for the document, put it in town of South Borough every time. So the lawyer, the H R consultant confirmed and agreed that the town was represented by the body that votes on it, which is the town council. And that that's the verbiage that they would understand legally, that's how they consider the town is the town council. And if you guys are the ones that vote on it, approve the policy, which that's the way it is, that's what it was, only you have the authority to change that. Maybe, you know, we didn't put that, I don't, I don't know if we put that specifically in, but. Yeah. We can get that, we can, you can, the idea behind the document was exactly that, to have it so that it's changeable, it's fluid, so that by motion and vote, body vote of the council, you guys are going to change stuff. We just implement it, you make policy, we implement. So it's up to you to do, if you want to do a workshop or you want to do a session, something, whatever, it's fine, whatever you want.
Yeah, and again, I, it was just something that piqued my interest and I felt obligated to, you know, bring it up to everyone's attention. I understand there's procedures and that decisions are made by a body here, majority, at least three. So, yeah.
Again, I have one problem, Sam, if you want to make a motion to do a workshop, but we can do it after the first of the year. I have zero issues with that. If you want to review it, everybody needs to be comfortable in what we do. And if you're not comfortable with it and you want to review it, put motion on the table, I get it, no issue.
I think I just want to chime in, just from a scheduling standpoint, I was originally going to suggest if we did do a workshop the same night that we're doing the legal training, just because we'll all be together, but I don't know that we can guarantee that. But see, our H R consultant would be available.
No, if you want to do this, it's going to be a, it'll be a lengthy thing.
So we're, we'll need Bethy, I can't remember what her last name is, but our H R consultant to join us as well as our town attorney. So we'll have to coordinate with them in order to get that scheduled. And I agree with John that I think it is something that we should wait until after the first of the year. But, but it can get it scheduled, so we can have workshop.
Oh, yeah, I'd be happy with that. I mean, I did read Sam's stuff and, you know, I mean, there's, I think you got a couple of few good points in there, which I think we should consider. Honestly, I haven't had time to read the whole document. I mean, we got 300 pages of information from you guys the other day to get through, you know, so, which, you're in there. Not now. I, so in any case, I, I mean, I'd like to become comfortable with the whole policy. I mean, it was, it was dense and, but, you know, I mean, I think it would be worthwhile to have a workshop on it at some point. But, you know, I am a little concerned about reopening entire documents that were approved by prior councils and, you know, going back and, you know, starting that whole process over. I mean, I don't think we should go there, but, you know, I think we could probably do a workshop.
I, I agree with that. I definitely don't intend on opening a can of worms where, you know, there have been reviews on it. Yeah.
No, that's why we're here. I appreciate your.
No, I, I, yeah, I think you all know how to speak up, so.
Anything else?
Do we want to schedule that workshop? Do we want to put it on the agenda for next meeting?
You got to put it on the agenda for next meeting. That, that what you want to do is put it on the agenda.
Put it on the agenda for the next meeting and schedule a workshop.
I'm already in a row.
I'll make a motion to put scheduling a workshop for the personal policy, personnel policy on our agenda for November 2050.
Second. Motion is second, any discussion?
I just want to clarify the thing that the motion on the table is action to be taken at our next meeting to schedule the workshop.
Sam?
Aye.
Aye.
Cool.
Mallory?
Aye.
Oh, aye also. You're good. Okay, I'll, I'll be somewhat brief. The, this is the last I'll say about the election and then I'm moving on. First of all, thank you to Melissa again for, for three years. I'd also like to thank everybody who ran. I think everybody conducted themselves in a very, you know, considerate way. There was very little acrimony and most of you folks are sitting out there tonight, so thank you for that. And, you know, I did talk to a lot of people as I walked through some neighborhoods and almost everybody said, when I said how many people were running, they were like, wow, that's, that's awesome. I mean, I think it was, it was, it was a great sign for the community, so thank you for that. A couple of things. The recount, I, I think we, we need a policy on how to deal with recounts. I mean, I think that should be on the to-do lists in the upcoming year. You know, hopefully not soon, but it's definitely that something needs to be done. I think we also need to work better on how we communicate the results to the public, to the press and actually to the candidates. I hate to say it, I was up until midnight, which is, you know, far beyond my bedtime. And it was, I was getting, I found the results out from people second and third hand. I didn't even, you know, I wasn't on Facebook looking for the results, so I think that we need to talk about that and that's very interesting, too. But the, the other point, I think, is that I've been looking at results from other municipal elections. There's at least three recounts that have been required or needed or asked for in Westbrook and Hillsworth and Brunswick, I believe. They still haven't conducted them. And those are towns with a lot more staff than we have and even some of the vote counts weren't even that much larger than ours. So I do think I'd like to give a shout out to you and your staff for getting that done, getting it done in a timely way. And I think with a large degree of, you know, class and confidence in what the results were, so thank you. Right, that's all I got. I mean, is that, I've been, there's no motion. I think I said my piece earlier, so thank you, everybody that's here for coming out. Thank you one last time to Melissa, I'll put in my plug if she sings tomorrow, who should be there. It's absolutely incredible. Other than that, again, thank you for everybody and.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor? Aye. It's so good, thank you everybody for coming. And always look out, okay?